Everybody except for Lou and Randy at the 6:00 point line. Any additions to the agenda? District's crowded, I don't have anything from there?
Nope, I expect some at the next July one.
Okay, and then public comment, anybody here for public comment?
Mark, do you want to approve the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
A motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over it. Okay, so I got a motion from Kella and a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. I apologize. So, public comment, correct amendment from the May 24th, 2016, to the board. Is that in your packet?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
Second that.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kella. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Okay, we'll move on to business, review and consider approval of the revised 2015-16 revenue and expenditure budget. Is it in your packet?
Yep, it should be in your packet. I did go through this with the board at the last meeting. No changes were made. So unless there's questions on the part of the board, I guess I would ask for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the revised 2015-16 revenue and expenditure budget.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so we got a motion from Bruce and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry. Review proposal of the 2016-17 revenue and expenditure budget.
This is the first look at this particular budget, so this is just for information. At the next meeting, I will bring this back to the board. I would encourage the board, if there's any questions, to get them asked to me before the meeting because as we go, we'll have to approve this by the end of our last meeting or two. So, we'll just kind of go through it quickly. This is built the same way that our revised budget is, and you can see the general fund, and you've got 15, 16, the revised revenue, that's off of the one you just approved, and the proposed. And you'll notice the proposed revenue is a little lower, but remember, we got more money from special ed. That's kind of the main reason for the difference there. Although, we're hoping to be about equal for students for next year. If not, up a little bit. Revised expenditures are $8,000, $845,000. Revenue's $9,184,000. And the proposed expenditures for '16-17 is $9,113,000. Okay, the same way goes across for food service. And again, I could read the numbers, but you can read them. And community ed, and the capital, the building construction, the debt service. And the debt service is an ongoing piece to pay for the things that we've got, and the trust fund is just a neutral. And then we'll get down to, any questions on at least the revenues and expenditures, '15-16 or '16-17?
I got one question.
Sure.
Can you tell me on community ed, down just a little bit, where you have that, we're reducing the budget $29,000?
Oh, on the other one, we weren't going, we didn't end up doing that when I talked with Joan, we did have enough that we had set aside to pay for that gym. So, as far as the revised budget you're talking about, or this one here?
This one here. It just says community education, so if I look at community ed, last year's revised revenue was $492, this year's $452, and a $29,000 variance, actually $40.
Yeah, it looks like Matt is spending down his budget a little bit. When we get a little bit further down, you'll see that he's defusing spending. I think there, we never want to have the community ed start to become a fundraising budget for us. So I know that he does want to keep it at a certain level, but I know that when we get down a little bit further, you'll see that he's defusing spending a little bit for next year.
But it's management, it's not that something's...
No, no, it's management. This is him running his budget. There's nothing that has happened that I'm aware of that would be extraordinary in the reason he's, for whatever reason, has decided that he could defuse spend a little bit. And we can certainly have Matt, he could not attend today. He has gone out of the district. But we can certainly at the next meeting, when he comes back, have him explain a little bit why it's down. And I'll get a specific answer for you, Bruce, before the next...
Well, it just kind of stood up, because half the time when we're looking at budgets, they're all going up.
Yes.
And okay, that's...
No, he's defusing spending, and it's on purpose. Either he'll be at the next meeting, when we, before I approve this, so we'll make sure that we get that answered, or I'll make sure I have the answer, the exact answer to the board on that.
Yes, with that, I mean, which he does an exceptional job, but I'm thinking that that should be, is it just him coming up with the number, or is it the committee coming up? Because I know that there's a, there's a community ed kind of advisory group.
There's advisory committee, but that, they don't plan the budget for him.
Okay.
He plans his own budget based on the needs of the piece, and that goes up and down also based on the programming that he puts in place.
Right.
But no, the committee does not set the budget.
Okay. But I would think that then there should be some guidance from administration to help...
Yeah, it's, I would say this, you know, once the money goes to either the building principals, or my community ed person, that's what, he gets paid, or Max, they get paid to run their budget.
Right, but that's set by the board. I mean, with the administration, I think everybody talks about it, and I'm thinking, unless I'm wrong, that we're miss, there is not a lot of conversation then, or unless you're having a lot of conversations with him.
I really am not. I guess my feeling is that I paid Matt to run his budget. He's shown me that over the years, he runs a very good budget. So I trusted him on running that budget. I've not seen anything in anything that I've looked at that would indicate to me that there's anything out of the ordinary there. Now, if the board wants, I can certainly go over his budget with them here. I could do the same with Max, but I don't do that. I know that my principals get their money, they use what they get, Max gets his money, he uses what he gets, and Matt gets a certain amount of money from the levy for community ed and for the fitness center, because that generates money, and he has always used that money appropriately. Where the, where I would say the catch is, is that I have to sign off on everything. So if I see anything unordinary, or Cheryl sees anything that's a little, doesn't look quite right, then we call Matt up and we ask him, "How about this particular piece?"
You still have some checks and balances.
There is when we sign off on it, because I do sign off on everything that he is purchasing, and so does Cheryl does take a look at those also.
A lot of times with our general run of other things, we are kind of setting prices, we're setting different things where this is kind of, you know, we want our children and our community to get the best bang for their buck, you know, and if it's just one person that's saying this is what we're going to be doing, then is that, is that right? I'm just posing the question. I'm not saying that we need to change anything, I'm just asking the question, would it be more advised that it would be administrative? I don't know what I'm saying.
I think you have to base some of, some of the analysis on results. If I got to take, if I break community ed out of that, like Bob said, it's results. Like, what brought the question up to me was, it was kind of unusual, but if it looks like it's a management thing, the results have always been really good from there. I guess I can go with the main, that's...
If there was a question, it looked like he was going to go in, he not have enough money to pay his bills, then certainly we would be having a discussion about what's going on. Even at the end of this, we look at, and he still has a healthy fund balance. And that's really where the kind of the pair meets the road with it. If, you know, if he doesn't look like he's managing right, certainly I'm going to ask more questions about it. He's run a very strong budget, all the years that I've been here. And again, I sign off on anything, if a $50,000 piece went through, but I'm guessing a lot of his budget, again, deals with people and the programming that he puts in place. He needs to make sure that he's budgeted appropriately, sometimes classes don't occur, that's why he doesn't spend as much money. You know, but again, if I went through the budget with him, I would be going by his recommendations regardless unless I saw something really strange. Because, you know, he's got the expertise in the community ed program, and from my point of view, I trust him to run a strong budget. Again, if he was close to the point where he had nothing in his budget, then I would be going over the budget with him. I would certainly also be spending a lot more time on it if it was coming out of other funds, which had an impact, but it kind of runs by itself. And as long as he runs a strong budget and he uses money appropriately, that's been my concern.
I think too, as long as, the groups and the activities are giving whether it be uniforms or equipment, or you know, that he's putting it back into the programs itself.
Yeah, all the money's going back to the program. If you take a look down on the very bottom, when you look at estimated fund balances, you know, he's still going to have $120,000 worth of fund balance, and I think that's a healthy fund balance. It's more than I have in my old general fund, Bruce, you're here.
No, I guess, the only question I have is that, you know, okay, so he's got a really healthy fund balance, are we paying too much, then, some of the kids paying too much for those activities, or not? I mean, we're, you know, it's just like food service. I mean, we are bound by law statutes and stuff that we have to, you know, charge students that some amount of dollars, but you can go way above that too, you know, so that's kind of where, I'm asking where the checks and balances.
I think certainly the committee that meets to talk about community ed, if it looked like any of the, we were charging too much for those, that's certainly a point where it would come out in discussion.
Okay.
You know, there's no doubt in my mind on that. And also, Matt would be getting phone calls, I would probably be getting phone calls, and I think you guys would be getting some phone calls. But I'll bring that, and certainly I will have Matt also talk about that, the next time he does a report for us.
And like I said, don't get me wrong, I think you did a really great job, and just nobody started talking about checks and balances, and who's responsible for what, and, you know, and still at the end of the day, we're still all been responsible for that budget and all the other budgets too, so, yes.
Well, and we see them come back to us, like when we had to deal with the test scores last year. We're in the middle of the winter, Bob goes to the paper with Lori, we had that class adjustment. So that, I think that would be a good example of where everything was there, it kind of messed me up a little bit in budget and that, but upon analysis, we had to make an end scene in process to make it better for the students.
And certainly Matt won't have any issues talking to the board a little bit about this. But again, he's my community ed director, he's the one that I trust to put his budget in place, and signing off on everything, I have seen no discrepancies whatsoever with what we're doing.
I think it's good, healthy discussion.
It's good discussion.
Well, I just, you know, we just need to know what it's all about, and who is responsible and all that.
Well, when the taxpayer comes to you and they wonder what we're doing here, it's hard to say, you know, we're just kind of not being attentive to that, because it's all done by these various people, and that's not an acceptable response.
We'll get you more information, but I would prefer not to speak for Matt on that, on why he put a deficit spending into the budget. We'll get you guys the answer again. We do not approve this until next week, so this is a good time for these questions to come up, and for sure, we'll have an answer on why the specific deficit spending for this particular budget. Okay? If you take a look at poster for deficit budget by fund, notice that my general fund is going to go up by 171,000. For every year I've been here, I've been trying to get between 150 and 200,000 back into the general fund, so that we can build our reserve fund up, so that we continue to make it until the end of the referendum. The food service will go up by, our projection is about 21,706. Community ed, that's the deficit spend of 29,987, and again, we'll get Matt in here, or I'll have an answer for why that is occurred at this time. Capital is going to go up a little bit, we're getting E rate in some planning also, we're carrying some money over, because we're saving for a number of things, just like I talked to you about, when we looked at the last year's budget, revised it. Building construction, of course, we only got so much money, now we're spending that down, so that's certainly going to be a negative. Debt service, again, that's where building constructions and the state determines all that goes, and then the trust fund. If you take a look at the very bottom columns, estimated fund balance, and then the projected fund balance at the end of 2017, and we're going up, and you can just go by, really, if you take the poster for deficit budget by fund, you just add that to whatever we have in the column in left for '15-16, and that's how you get the fund balance for the other column. So again, our general ed fund balances continue to rise, our food service fund balance is going up. Glad to see it go up, remember, we spent that down ways, just because we had a freezer go out and a dishwasher, and I was amazed by the cost of both those items. So, again, we don't want to make money on that. When we come back with costs for food, I think we're still going to have to go up, probably a dime, because that's what the federal government is telling us, to go up until we reach a certain point, we're not there yet. But we'll cover that when we get to the fees for next year. Community ed is dropping again by the 29,000. The capital tech and long-term facility maintenance, that's going up, but again, that includes all of those items in there. Tech levy, we're going to be saving a little bit now, because number one, we didn't spend as much as we thought we would spend for the first year. For the second year, now we'll start saving for our rotation. Although I will tell you, there's going to be some discussion at the tech levy, the tech committee, to talk about how we want to do that. With iPads and more portable devices now, the question will be that will come to the tech committee, is do we want to spend it on more workstations or more portable devices? Again, that will come to the board after my technology committee discusses that, and they'll come back with their recommendation on what they think we should do. Long-term facility maintenance, did save 10,000 out of that account, so again, that just carries over into the next year, and that was left there specifically to add to more additional roofing projects as we go forward. You'll see that account rise, because we want to start saving for some projects now. This first year, we didn't get as much money, but as the next couple of years go on, you're going to see that reserve fund for that rise considerably, so that we can save for HVAC projects and also for roofing projects. So that we don't have to go to the community or borrow money, when we want to do another project in those areas. Then the building construction, and debt service, and the trust fund. We still have about $700,000 in building construction, we're going to be spending that down, I added the projects, and it's what's left in that account, but again, every year now, it will go down. Last year, the fifth year, you're going to see another roofing project take place, and that would finish off the majority of the costs. Questions on this?
Looks pretty good. Where it says it, LTFM?
Yep, that's long-term facility maintenance.
I was curious about, can we write that out?
Yes, we can write that out.
Because I think that's a really important thing for us to track, because if it sets it up for us to be able to do roofs and stuff, and that fund starts to be built, everybody's got to know that that fund is not in the general fund, it's not...
Those dollars, yeah, those dollars can only be used for deferred maintenance, health and safety projects.
Right.
That's it. That's all those dollars can be used for. That can't be transferred into our general fund. It's for specific purposes in our case. Again, we talked about a boiler, for instance, if we wanted to purchase a new boiler, we'd have to save the money, so that we could purchase that. I wouldn't want to go borrow money for those types of things.
So if you were to guess, and I'm not asking, just kind of curious, if we go three, four years with this LTFM, because I think that was a three-year program, wasn't it?
No, it's a ten, it's...
It's a ten-year program?
It's a ten-year program. It doesn't look like it's going to go away. We have to put a ten-year plan in place, but this program should continue on forever.
So this fund could build to a $200,000 or $300,000 number for a roof that we need?
I'm hoping to see it for more when we're ready to do a roof.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Yes, because there is a, economy of scale to some degree, bigger roofing project, it usually is cheaper for us to do.
Gotcha.
But we also have work, continue to do on our HVAC system, so it's a chance for us to do that. There's going to be a time when I'd like to put a couple hundred, or $100,000 for the HVAC system, and $100,000 for the roofing project in the same year, and build that up, so that we can do a couple projects.
Good.
But if, every year I need to bring the long-term facility piece back to you, so then you'll have to approve that budget. So every year, you'll see what we're looking at, and we did bring that to the board, so if you go back to that time we did that, you'll see where I'm saving the dollars through all those next 10 years. So that'll give you an idea where we're at. Other questions? Well, again, if you have specific questions, make sure that you do get a hold of me, just give me a call, so I get you the answer, because again, I will be on a timeline to get it approved by the board at the next meeting.
Number three, review and consider approval of the annual ADE, which is an Adult Basic Ed Consortium Agreement with Glacier Lakes Consortium for 2016 and '17.
Yeah, if you take a look at the adendum, it pretty much explains it. This is an annual consortium renewal agreement for participation in the Adult Basic Education Program. Every year, we've done the same thing. And this is by state statute, we have to do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve this agreement.
So that, a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the next one's going to be a resolution, so review and consider approval of a resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidacy.
Yeah, this is one of those ones that comes up every kind of every other year. So this is just the normal piece that we need to do in order to put board names on that agenda, the ballot.
For those who are up for election, are we supposed to extend this vote?
Um, no. If you're not voting for yourself in this, all you're doing is saying that we need to put this up for election.
I'll make a motion that we approve, approve that resolution.
Yeah, we're just establishing the dates for the filing affidavits of candidacy.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Kella. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, Brenda?
All right, Kella, aye. Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Motion taken. All right, number five, review and consider a resolution relating to education of school board members and calling the school district general election. Again, other resolutions?
Yep, again, it just relates to the election of the school board members and calling the school district general election. So these all pertain to us putting on the ballot.
Make a motion for it?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mark and a second from Randy. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carry.
Oh, no, resolution. Oh, sorry.
Resolution. I was just thinking.
Kella?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Bruce?
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, motion taken.
As the chairperson, can I make a comment here? Sure. In all that I did when I was going to the chairperson things and trying to watch things, this is having us to do a vote like that, and not just a regular vote, it's just a painful thing.
Really?
Yes. So it doesn't have to be a resolution, and you don't have, you can pass a resolution by a regular vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, just look for that. I don't know that it makes any difference, but the most important thing, they always said at the meetings, is just to make absolutely certain the public knows how you voted.
Yeah.
So if they know what we need to know who it was, if you vote...
Correct, but that goes with everything. If you have a no vote on almost everything, let's say I vote no on this, or I voted no on something else, Mark would say, all in favor, we have one opposed, which is Bruce Barron at home. So the public knows what you had. I just thought I'd bring it up, point of affirmation. I know it's always a hard one in your position, because I did that thing, they do, they blow over them, but it was harder for me when I was listening to them at the meetings, that we just really haven't do that.
What I will do is, I want to double check on that, Bruce, just to make sure that we follow procedures. I do know, I think you're right in that we need to know, but I think from the point of the resolution, we still need to write who voted yes and who wrote who voted no. I think that's probably why they do the roll call, like you had mentioned.
Yeah, it's not that hurts anything, that.
Yep, it's certainly up to the board on how they want to do that.
Well, if you want to find out for sure, and then we get back to our... Okay, review and consider approval of the 2016-17 Secondary Student Parent Handbook. Is it in your packet? It looks like somebody put some marks in there. Highlighted, good.
I think we did some nice marking of it. Not too many changes in the handbook this year. There was one change that came up from the staff, and that was in our perfect exemplary attendance policy, which is in the handbook as an incentive for all students to come to school. Not so much as a grade issue, but just be here at school, if you're here at school, you're in classes, you're engaged, your grades hopefully will follow suit. But with that in mind, this year, and other years, and we had a conversation about it, was truly if a student is on that bridge of failing a class, should be allowed to not take the final, and they may or may not pass any hit, they're on that bridge, when we decide three weeks before the end of the year, if they're going to get that perfect or necessary attendance, and then all of a sudden, if they make that, they could, if they check out that last three weeks, we could possibly have a student fail a class. So we thought, maybe we should put some type of grade criteria that, when we send out that letter for perfect exemplary attendance, that we know those kids are going to pass those credits, you know, for sure, and then it's up to the parents if they want them to take advantage of that. You know, is that two days and not doing their final is kind of that reward. So we came up with just that they have to have a D plus or better, as well as having missed three days or less of school during the school year.
So if you had that or you didn't, because if that came home on a permission slip, that I had to sign something for my son to be able to participate, I wouldn't sign that he should take the test.
And that's, then that's a parent, and a parent has that option. I mean, that's where we send out the letter, you know...
But it doesn't work.
Yes.
Is it some way established to, but it does work to bring kids in?
It does, and actually, one thing I was going to bring up on my report, and since we have had, John Janata actually brought this year, I mean, like, four or five years before his retirement, and our attendance has since then gone up, and since I've been here with the promotion of it, and what I added was the maximum attendance, where you couldn't miss more than, because our overall attendance was poor when I came, but we had a lot of kids that would make this, but then, once they missed those three days, they kind of washed out and then didn't come. So we did the maximum attendance, which was they couldn't miss more than 12 days a semester, which is pretty much in suit with all our area schools, and then, or they lose credit for the class. But our attendance report is in, and right now, both our middle school and high school have a ninety, over a 96% attendance rate, which shows that kids are coming to school, they're engaged in school, commutation, their activities after school, that's a very high attendance rate. So I do think this is a big part of that, the overall, but I do think, I know I have talked to parents and said, you know, this is where I see certain students are at, I would advise that we keep them in school for those times. I've done just more of that personal connection with parents on students on that bridge, but I guess I would like to see something in our handbook as well, because it just takes the argument out of it, and it's very black and white, so...
Well, I was just curious if it did anything, because at the same time, they're going to leave here and they're going to go to college, or they're going to go somewhere, and you can be perfect attendance at college, and when it comes on for the final... Or go somewhere. And you can be perfect attendance at college and when it comes on for the final, nobody's gonna give you the day off.
Not anymore.
So it's part of the process and...
And some of our classes do, in order to get the college credit, they have to take the testing. They just take it prior to that date, you know, or some of our certification classes, they have to take that, that college part of that final or certification before they leave. It's just the teachers kind of rearrange those test schedules so they may have an additional final test for those other students that are here. It does make it more black and white for myself as the administrator when talking with a student that, you know what, your grades need to be at least here. So...
What has, how, what was our practice before?
If they missed three days or less...
No, I mean for the grades.
For, for the grade part, there was nothing there.
So if you had somebody that was close to being failing or whatever, you, I'm assuming would have had that conversation.
By pol, yeah, by policy they could. I would call the parent and negotiate that with the parent. And I would say most of the time, the parent would go along with me. There would be some times where the parent went and by policy, unfortunately, they would just be retaking that class the next year during summer school.
And I guess that's where I'm at with that is would be that if they, you tell them now that they have to have a D plus, for example, and years past they didn't, and I'm sitting at a D and taking that my final isn't gonna really make or break it, then what is it in there for me at the end of the day? But if now if they were truly gonna be failing, I'd rather have that conversation with that student and the parent before that and saying, okay, you are on this, on the docket to be at the exemplary policy, be meeting that, but your grades are so or such that I don't know if you're gonna even pass it. So I would highly suggest that you take it and...
In hopes to get there.
In hopes to get there, but I'm just thinking if there was a kid that had a B in it or they were here all the time and that last grade isn't gonna make a difference, then now you're forcing him to come and take something that he's really not gonna stay for or whatever.
And, and I guess that point is, I, hopefully, because they know they need to get there, they'd be more engaged than they would be, you know, to get that minimum grade. And, and the D plus is kind of what as a staff kind of in conversation, and my principal advisory committee group kind of thought was you should be able to get that if you're engaged in here. So there would be more motivation, because if they know that's the line, they will try to get to that line.
Well, I mean, all you can, all you can do is try.
Okay, and that's what I guess I would look at is if we try it and see. And, you know, getting out of those finals, I really see, and when I talk to students, I said, you know what, it's like an award. You know, it's the cherry on top of the ice cream sundae. Is, you know, if you get it, that's great. If not, you're just doing what's expected. You know, you know, it's not expected to get out of school those two days. It's a reward. Or we're Catholic or, or, you know, we're good. Sometimes if a child really doesn't care, you know, they're not going to, or parents aren't gonna be behind them to go anyway. But like you said, this gives you a help that you can refer back to. And, and we're trying. We're doing everything we can do to try to make the education that they can get here important to them. And, and I guess I would like to try it and see what happens and, you know, report back next year and, and see how things are. Overall, I'm, I feel very proud of where our attendance is and we can't complain with ninety-six percent. You're always gonna have kids sick, they're gonna need to go to doctor's appointments, those kinds of things. But it shows me that our kids are engaged and enjoy coming to school.
What does schools around us suspect it? Are we kind of on our...
We, this is, this is unique. I mean, the ten, I mean, schools around us have attended or twelve-day maximum attendance rule, but the perfect exemplary attendance is unique as a motivation piece. And, and from talking with John, it was something because our attendance was really low that he put in as a motivation. Mark, he might have been around when, when that started. And it really served its purpose well. I, I think it really has. And from ninth grade through twelfth grade, they are looking for it. You know, they know what's out there.
And like you said, the more and more courses are requiring them to take it anyhow, especially your advanced students. And I think when I hear, you know, with my children being in school and stuff, there are still kids even that they, they have that ability to not take it. They're, they're taking it because they want to raise their score or whatever, so...
And, and part of that, so some of you that are a little newer, is kids can come in and take a final and it can't hurt them, but can only help them. So they can, then they can have a choice, like in college, you know, where they're becoming more independent, is they can come in and take it and say for just this class or just that class and see how they do. So and we do have, I would say probably at least a third of the students do come in for one or two of those and, and take their finals anyway.
My only question is, the way this is written, if they do not have a D plus or better by fourth quarter midterm, the way it's written, they can no longer get exemplary attendance.
Which is by the time grades are processed, et cetera, that's about three weeks. We have to send out the exemplary attendance within that three weeks to be able to get the permission slips back and the information out to the teachers. So that is about that cutoff date.
But, but it's... But at that point, the way this is written, at that point, if they don't have a D plus or better at that point in all classes, they cannot get exemplary attendance.
And I could add a line as far as, or when exemplary attendance is defined, we do have to define it.
I would suggest instead that you put the...
Wordsmith it?
Put it down below in the next paragraph with the testing, that if they do not have a D plus or better, they must take that test in that class.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I could wordsmith it.
Because then the students aren't limited from exemplary attendance for attending all that time and considering they're there.
That they must have...
But they must take that test if they do not have a D plus or better by that...
In that course.
Sure. In that course, yeah.
Could we forsake of that, you have to send this to production, wordsmithing it down into that with that in mind?
I would approve that, yes.
And then approve it so, because our deadline is, you know, or we can fail leaky or whatever. But if we can move it down to that, I would agree. Because the idea is that we, we just want to know that they're going to pass those classes.
Sure. I, I understand that. I just, the way it was written, it could have eliminated exemplary attendance by the end of the year.
Yep, no, I, I understand that. So, yep, so I can move that. So that was one. Thank you. And then the other one was more modernizing the book. And I will say with all the different things that happened during the school year, our student handbook has been very useful and has served the purpose of answering questions and dealing with situations as things have come up. I haven't found any real situations that aren't addressed. But on the second one was just looking at the telecommunication devices. And I am gonna move that title to the next page, but is, when this was written, was several years ago. It's been modified at times, but reading it, pagers are not something that most of our students use. I mean, if we would find one in the building, it would still fall under the telecommunications.
We don't even know what it is.
It may not be as old as a record player, but it's getting close. But instead, you know, just for example, using iPads and notebooks, because those are the things that our students are using more. So it's just more of that modernization in the wording.
I haven't liked this book, actually. I've always been somewhat critical, especially I was critical over the bullying thing. It is very clear for parents of the students, right from the index in the front, to find out where this book to go to find their information. So the layout is very, very nice.
Just be aware of that, when I get my PDF of this thing, it's in a really is the handbook format. I wanted the board to have it a little bit bigger, so that's why the format doesn't turn exactly as they...
Well, because it's made for, the main Gintang actually donates all our handbooks to our students in the student planners that you'll see, that each of the students get at the beginning of the year. So we're really grateful for their continued support to be able to do that. So it does...
The format changes a little bit when I made it to one page like this. So just, just be aware of that.
Any other questions or concerns that you may have seen? Okay, thank you.
So, do we need to have a motion here?
I, I think I do need a motion.
Yeah, if you're gonna prove the handbooks, you should have a motion with one exception.
With the understanding of wordsmith.
I make a motion to raise up the handbook with the change, the wordsmith.
Yeah, wordsmithing, yes.
Okay, so I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign. And carried. Thank you. Can we move on to personnel? Review and consider approval of resolution placing Amy, our Amy Jolie, on restricted, requested leave of absence by a point one seven two FTEs due to lack of pupil and financial limitations.
This is the last step on putting a staff member on an request to leave. Again, just remind the board that it is our hope that between a grant that we're getting in our integration dollars that we will come back to the board and we will ask to increase her FTEs. But again, my philosophy has been, don't count on the money until you get it. All right, so that's why we need to put her on request to leave. If we come back, I'll ask the board to increase her FTEs to full-time. But again, until we get the grant, if I don't do it within a certain timeline, I can't. So this will be the final step.
Got a motion from Heidi. Second from Kala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. Linda?
Kala? Aye. Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
And motion carried. Review and consider approval of the following staff for the Paineville Area Summer Morning Targeted Service, PAX program. Charlene Strand, Jennifer Leers, Kim Jones, Wanda Havi or Havi, and Sue Pecher.
Yeah, the adendum, it does break down into the exact hours that we're doing this. It's targeted services, so it is, does pay for itself through targeted service.
I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Review and consider approval of Kim Jones as ESY, which is Extended School Year Teacher, for a total of fourteen hours.
Same thing would apply.
I make a motion that we approve.
And motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Informational reports.
Oh, sorry.
Review and consider approval of Brad Pence to teach the M, or middle school, high school, targeted service remediation program in June, or June and July.
And again, same thing. Go pay through extended programs, targeted services.
So I got a motion from Heidi. Second from Kala. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Now we've got our information. Elementary principal report from Mr. Orland.
Hello. Uh, just an update on things going on at the elementary and not going on. Which one would be the gym floor that we thought was gonna be accelerated a few weeks ago? And, and they're making progress on the high school floor, so hopefully we'll be able to get in there soon and we won't have to reschedule too many activities. Uh, just some things going on. We have the POS program going on. Kids all over the building all summer. It's just, it keeps the building lively. I don't know if custodians are still able to get everything finished up. So we have preschool, summer school that will be going on. We have extended school year with some special ed students that will be going on. And we also have our morning team and our theater camp and just lots of fun activities going on for kids through our targeted services and our integration collaborative. Uh, we have about sixteen students, third grade through eighth grade, who in July, three days a week, will be going to Melrose for a, a MAP study island type program. And that's the transportation and everything is paid for through the integration collaborative. So that's been, I think this is our third year that we've done that. We are finished taking applications for our fire acquisition and we will be scheduling interviews for next week. And so we will have our recommendation for the next board meeting. Any questions for me?
Nope. Okay, secondary principal, Lori Flora.
Uh, we will, uh, thank you for the hire. We'll be starting our targeted services bootcamp for both middle school and the credit recovery program for the high school at, towards the end of June, June twenty-seventh. So that will be a good program for our students. The other things going on is we have moved, and it has gone very well, to an online registration program. This year, we kind of took it and said we want to train everybody, kind of more a hands-on approach. From, um, in January, when registration comes around for the following year, faculty and students will be doing it during their conferences, but it has gone very well. So it will definitely say this time in our office as far as that data entry point. And I also think it will give students kind of that, you know, what they do in college. Because it's set up like a college page, it's set up like a college registration page. So kind of give them a touch before they're kind of off on their own doing it. So that was kind of the purpose of that. And students have been great. It's been fun to see them during the summer come in in small groups. Uh, today we gave the Accuplacer for our college credited MAP class, our MAPRO class, our college English class, and I'll be giving it two more times next week. And then if I have some follow-ups, we do it here. I'm certified to do it right here in our building. So working with students to schedule those, those times. The big news, and you'll see it in the paper, our baseball team made it to the state. So that has been exciting. So those kids will be going to Abeyways tomorrow and then their first game is at five thirty up in St. Cloud on Thursday. So we wish them well. And if that's all we have from here, do you have any questions?
Where's the net? Second hope.
I don't know, is it?
Dick Butts.
Putts.
No, Dick Butts.
Yeah.
That's Matt.
Yeah. So it should be an exciting game. We hope to have lots of fans there. Uh, we will have some shirts on sale for just fans, starting at noon tomorrow. So if anybody would like to purchase a baseball shirt, we will have a limited supply starting for fans at noon tomorrow.
Um, I guess one thing I would, one I wanted to add for both you and, and Mr. Orland is, at the, at the end of the summer, it'd be nice to get an update on how many children we did serve through the summer for the different targeted programs and what we've done. I think that's always really nice to know, even though that school is out, people really don't realize that there's a lot of school that is still...
Some objectives we have.
There's still a lot of schooling going on and the dedication to some of the people that are in our community that are doing this for the children. I think it'd be a nice report at the end of the summer, just to...
As part of our kind of report, we, we go to...
Free schools to.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Something you have to add to that today, so.
Okay, all right, then we have, move on to administrative report. Robert Hewitt.
Okay, just a few things, last time we had a board meeting, I said I couldn't believe graduation was over, now I can't believe that we're in the middle of June already. Had a heck of a rain last weekend, we had a, from what Donnie says, about three inches, we had water coming into our buildings through the courtyards because the courtyards flooded again. Donnie did go out and he checked one of the drains, I think in high school courtyard, and it was flooded. So that's been cleared up now, so hopefully that will take care of that one. We still have some work to do in the middle school courtyard, we're not sure, a lot of land has settled and concrete has settled, and it looked like it was puddling in one specific place, which then caused the water to run into the building, so we're probably gonna get out maybe moss plumbing or another plumbing outfit to take a look to see what we can do. We're gonna have to come up with something or we're gonna continue to have water coming into those, you know, our buildings when we get that kind of downed word.
When we get our A class to Tyler.
Tyler underneath the building.
Yeah.
That would be interesting.
We do have drain, one in the middle school, the drain was open, but again, it looks, just looks like the land has settled considerably in certain areas, and I, we think that's what's causing it, so we're gonna have to take a little bit harder look at that one. We're hoping that just the cleaning of the drain and the one will take care of it.
We can probably fix that by digging a bigger hole and put a pool in it.
There it is. Why don't we add that?
I would remind the board that a pool, the expense of terrain is not in my budget at this current time.
How about it?
We could certainly take a look at that.
There you go. I only do that.
Okay, have we moved past the pool spot?
We're just gonna get thousands of them.
As Lori mentioned and Dave, we're in the process of getting all our floors done, it has been a little bit more work than they would be allowed, we don't believe that our gym floor here has ever been done. So when they went to sand, they had to sand a considerable amount of product off the top of the wood, the wood, so. If you want, I'll certainly walk down at the end of this, if you wanna take a look just to see what it looks like. We're behind on the elementary, I'm not sure, David, have they given us a timeframe to get in yet? So we'll have to take a look at that, I get a little nervous when it takes more time because summer does disappear quickly. Fundraiser, we did have fundraiser from the choir and band, was the Butter Brand, Butter Grate.
Butter Grate.
Butter Grate pastry, and revenues were eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four, expenditures were four thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight, and profit was three thousand three hundred and five, and that is going towards their trip to California.
Disney World.
Disney World, Florida. Disney World in Florida.
What was the total amount they needed to raise?
It's, it keeps changing with the fundraisers, so I think the trip itself was like eight hundred per student, and then as they fundraise, it goes down for the individual student cost. So.
So I'm assuming we'll probably see some more of that.
We can, yeah, as we get closer, because they have, you'll see a few more fundraisers come through that just finished out, that I think I just sent over to your mail, so at, towards the end of the summer, when she does her final cost, I can let you know what each student's part is.
We just had somebody come out to take a look at the playground by the stadium, and they're gonna come back with a quote. They did feel it'd be quite expensive if we attached to the stadium itself and covered that whole area out to the playground, so they're gonna give us a quote on just what it would cost if we put some poles in the ground and covered that just the playground area. So we'll see what that is, once they get us the quote, they just came out last Friday, so they haven't gotten back to us yet on what it will cost.
Can you just mention for the public, so if somebody's listening, why we're doing this?
It's just a matter of number of foul balls that come out of the stadium, and if we have kids and parents with smaller kids playing in the playground area, there's a number of foul balls, and if it came down at the wrong time, wrong place, it would not be good, so it's purely safety reasons why we're looking at doing that. Look at law people to play there safely while baseball games are going on. We're still waiting for approval for MDE for the QCOM plan. It's, what had happened is that there's certain times when people can put in for QCOM. Well, the MDE, the Minnesota Department of Ed has to respond to those within a thirty-day window, I think, so they were working on ours because we'd already put ours in and have been adjusting it, and we met with MDE and person, MDE made some final changes and would send it back to them, but then in the meantime, a new file went in that they had to look at to make the thirty-day window, and now I think this coming week, they're coming back to the plans that had put in earlier. So we're hoping to find out within a couple weeks on whether MDE approves our plan. Again, if that's approved, we can go forward at the start of the school year. Starting the new voice messaging machine, administrative team took a look, took a look at it, our current line school reach had been taken over by school messenger, so at that time, we took the opportunity to look at various different voice messaging software, and we picked what's called Bright Arrow. Community has already started to use it, and it'll be incorporated into all of our school messaging by the start of the school year. Sometime during the summer, once we get it set up, a test message will go out to all turns. But we're, we're excited, we think that's going to give us the opportunity to do a number of things that we haven't done, from coaches, being able to notify parents more easily, there's a mobile app type of thing that's attached to this, so we're excited to give this one a try. Talk to, just to get an update on the solar garden, we're hoping that Excel will approve our solar garden piece within a week or two, so we believe it's getting closer, and we continue to work on steps for the strategic plan, and we meet again on Thursday with the administrative team, so eventually we'll come back to the board with our action steps. Questions for me?
I have one quick question.
Sure.
A little bit off. We're working on our gym floors, do those guys watch the humidity? Because one thing about putting that flooring down, I was in the art store years ago, and everybody and everybody's brother had a, had a wood floor, and the application of that high humidity, like you said, it was stoned a little bit, Dave, we certainly don't want them to rush through a something and get a bad floor.
No, they keep an eye on that.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I guess I just wanted to give you all an update on evaluation that I promised I was gonna put together for Bob, and I have a meeting set up to go over what I, the first draft or soul of it, and then once we concur with that, that's kind of where the direction we wanna go, then I will bring it to everybody to look at and then get feedback from you guys, too. And it's not, it's not gonna be a policy, it's not gonna be, it's just basically a procedural type thing, so it's, we don't have to vote on it or anything like that, it's just basically a.
It just would be my evaluation, and certainly I think at, after Mark and I talked about on Thursday, we can send it over.
Yep.
For you guys to take a look at it and get any response to me about that, and then we can certainly put on the agenda for June, and probably come up with how you wanna build up and that type of thing.
Right. Because as you know, the evaluation process was kind of pruned in the past, so this year's evaluation isn't really gonna be stellar, it's gonna be what we're gonna build on from this year to next year, so his evaluation could be more meaningful for next year. Again, evaluate them for something that we don't, we never had in place before, so this could be a start of the process.
It's built, some of you have seen the MSBA model, you, you've been into presentations on that, it's built on the competencies of a superintendent.
Right.
That's what it's built on.
But I think it should be a good.
I think it looks good.
Any other discussions? All right. Got a motion from Heidi, and I'll make a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All the same, sign. Carry.